This conference will now be recorded.
It looks good, Sean. Don't let him pick on you.
New year.
I have a new haircut. Yeah, you're laughing at mine, too. My mom said it doesn't make people look younger.
It makes them look more sophisticated.
Well, that's my cut, too.
Everybody's getting haircuts, so mine just fall down. I don't have to worry.
That's my eyebrows and my eyelashes. They're all falling out. All those weird things that happen to the person. All right.
Are the slides going to be in order? I'm not going to be jumping around? Zaree?
How was it? Yeah? How long did it take? Nice.
Down there. There we go.
Yeah.
Hey, how's it doing?
I'm good.
All right, we will. Am I on here? Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming. We'll call this evening's meeting to order. Clerk, can you please start the recording? Thank you. Today is Wednesday, January 25th, 2023. I wouldn't have known that if I didn't read it. And I would like to call today's city council meeting to order. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have clerk? Do we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Absent, excused.
Councilmember Boyle?
Here.
Councilmember Strobin?
Present.
Mayor Protem Servini?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Absent, excused. Brings us to citizens' public comment. Clerk, can you please call up the public comments from the audience?
Dennis Hill?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just a bit short here. I read, wrote this down so I wouldn't forget everything. I attended the La Center School District Board Meeting last night and was very impressed with the presentation made by two of our elementary school principals. They put on a great presentation. With this type of leadership, I know our kids are in great hands here in the La Center School District. They really did a super job. I also want to thank Pete Rosenkrantz, Peter Rosenkrantz, our school superintendent, for his leadership, and I told him that I really did appreciate the fact that he attended. He's been attending our city council meetings. I think that's a big plus for us. Last evening, Todd Jones, Director, Position Two, indicated that he was leaving the board. This position covers families in the southern part of the school district. Todd has served on the La Center School District for 19 years, and I say congratulations to him and wish him the very best. The school board will be looking for candidates to fill the Position Two vacancy very soon. If you know of anyone within the Position Two area and you feel that they would make a great board member, please reach out to them, and they do have a wonderful board, and to be a part of it would be a real privilege. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Mauer?
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Ken Mauer. I live on 1855 East Barlet Court, representing the Vista View Homeowners Association. I was in here two weeks ago and asked about what we're going to do on 18th, and I thought I'd bring you up. We did take Mr. Cass's recommendation of higher-end River City to clean out the drains from the wetlands above the homes down to the city. Hopefully, that'll take care of it, works it. But what I wanted to make sure that was still on your plate is how to fix the water that we have on 18th Street come this summer. I didn't know if you had a chance to plan on anything or what your thoughts are. I would be available to meet with you and discuss it anytime when we get ready to do that. So, anyway, I just want to let you know the progress we had. Very good. Now, I'm going to go to the basketball game.
Thank you.
Peter Rosenkrantz?
Thank you. Good evening. Excuse me. Peter Rosenkrantz, 1203 East Pioneer Loop. Thank you, Dennis. Very kind words. Yes, we do have an open board position. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things happening that I think are pertinent to our city. First of all, in leadership positions, I think it's really challenging to be in a leadership position now because there's, it's really challenging with so many different factions and so actively trying to bring ways, find ways to bring us together over common interests and common realities. Currently, 35% of our students attend college. They'll leave our high school and go on to college, 35% to 40%. That means 60% roughly do not go to college. And that means they're going to military, they're going to service industry, or they're going to skilled trades. And I would admit that right now, we do a really good job of serving kids going off to college, but not necessarily off to the skilled trades. So, we're actively working to rectify that by partnering with Ratchee, Holmes, Tappany, Wolf Industries to bring skilled trades into our high school. We're revamping our metal shop into a construction zone where we will be working initially with electrical and framing modules to teach the skills for our kids and build sheds. We'll then sell sheds. The money will go back into, and they can be she sheds or he sheds. It doesn't matter. So, that money will then go back into the program, and then the next year, those students will take the skills with electrical and framing, move into plumbing and HVAC, and build tiny homes in line with Wolf Industries, and they do that out of battleground, and then sell those homes and continue the program. By the third year, I hope that we'll have kids in apprenticeships, active apprenticeships, working towards electrical, plumbing, any of the construction components, earn high school credit. So, like running start, they graduate with a high school diploma and an AA. Well, hopefully, we can have kids graduate their high school diploma and a two-year apprenticeship card, and they can enter the trades. We're really trying to open our doors to any company that is looking to hire and come in at lunch and talk with kids about the opportunities they have for us, so they can open their eyes to the world around them and see what floats their boat. It's not about what I want for them. It's about what the kids want for themselves and how they can raise their family on a family wage job. The skilled trade is a great opportunity here. So, anyway, I think that serves our community really well. I just wanted to update you on that. So, thank you.
Please, Pete? Let's talk later. I've got some contacts for you.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Al Filla?
Al Filla, 152 West 15th Street. Boy, everybody sort of took my, I'm going to say something positive about schools, you know? And I turned my name thing in first. I should have been first, but that's okay. I got your name down. Okay, but I've been going to the games, and last Friday night, one of the guys from the school got up and he says, "Tomorrow, we're going to have our inclusive basketball team play a game at 11 o'clock." And so, what's inclusive? I didn't know. Guys next to me didn't know. So, I went down to the snack bar, and the gal was selling popcorn. She knew. The developmentally disabled kids were going to play a basketball game, but it was numerous schools. And it, to see those kids, I mean, they didn't, they didn't have to dribble. They didn't have, they just went down there and had fun and shot. They missed. They shot again. But what really impressed me was over in the student section, and I'd been to the game the night before, and there were just as many students there to watch this inclusive team play, and the cheerleaders were there. And if that doesn't tell you something, you know, then you guys might as well just go home, you know? Because it's just outstanding. And, you know, well, thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks for the teary eyes.
Kimberly Elvin?
Good evening. I did bring a bunch of stack of papers here on the ICLEI, the International Council for Local Environmental Issues, excuse me, Initiatives at Vancouver, city council or 15-year members of, which is a United Nations entity. There's a lot of information here. I'm going to let the public go ahead and look at that and council members if they would.
Thank you.
So, I have history here with the school system. Besides my heart towards my fellow man, it's a pretty mean system right now and was back then. I just didn't know any better. I had an illegal lockdown. I couldn't carry the Bible. I did. I was a patriot back then. So, someday, when I write my book, my school history will come forth. But I do want to address the council here, that I speak at other councils. Unfortunately, I like to kind of lay under the cover and not be a known public citizen, but I'm kind of out there right now due to the clarkcountytoday.com paper, that somebody wrote something about me, and that's okay. I've been sharpened for many years for, I guess, this type of duty, of which I consider a duty since I took an oath to protect my country and her people against foreign and domestic enemies. I want to make sure that we are not domestic enemies here, folks. I don't know a lot of the citizens here that we've elected, but I do consider the Mayor Protem and the mayor running under a socialist agenda. I think it's pretty clear when she corrected, now, mind you, I'm still vetting these people as people that we have to trust, that we voted in, and that they'll serve God and the country through our constitution, which godly men put in place for us, so that I can stand here and speak. Whereas at the Clark County Council, I cannot go into the building anymore, and that's my next lawsuit. Unfortunately. But I do want to say that Mayor Protem stepped over the line of being a decent person to her fellow council member. I have a letter here from Sally that when she wrote back in January 11, and this is in the minutes, she was concerned about that very subject, and then was concerned that when she went on to play the audio, she couldn't hear anything. So, I do want to say, I don't know if the council answered Sally's letter. I hope they did, but that she probably played the first minute or two or three, and the meeting wasn't taking a in-order session yet. So, I think that's what that was, but she thought maybe it was excerpted out of the video, and so, audio, and I definitely wanted to look at that, right?
Let's get your comments.
Thank you. Well, I do have a lot more to say, but you know, I'll hold it for another time. I always do. I could stand up here all day. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And I'll put these in public record.
We have no more from the audience.
Okay, thank you. If there are any comments coming from those calling in, please remember to press star six to unmute yourselves to speak.
There's no one joining us online.
All right, we will. Are there any public comments to be read?
We have one.
Okay, thank you.
This is from John Jokola. "Good morning. I am writing to ask for the council to reconsider the establishment of a street fund per the request of the Washington State Auditor. The January 11 council meetings seem to end with an odd vote of 2-2 and a non-passage of what I see as a crucial element to give you more tools in your toolbox of overseeing city expenditures. Being a CPA myself with many years of experience in both local and federal agencies, I can tell you that this is a not, this is not a budget-neutral decision. The very short conversation seemed to stem around the ability to continue to receive gas tax monies designated for streets, regardless of whether a separate fund exists or not. But the reality is, by not having a separate fund, the state auditor will spend more time tracking transactions, having to conduct increased audit measures, and who pays for that increased audit measure time? It is the taxpayers. The city is billed for all the audit hours done in an audit. Your decision has certainly flagged the state auditor staff to increase their time on-site and likely increase the number of transactions reviewed under or because their recommendation was not implemented. This will become an ongoing recommendation, and at some point, if not established, become an audit finding which leads to possible declinations of state grants, lending, or other issues when a city has findings. When the fourth street construction project on the horizon, I can't imagine why not having a separate street fund at this time wouldn't be an elegant solution to track all those increases in transactions coming. It'll make for accounting simplicity of moving revenues and costs through that fund versus inflating the general fund or mingling capital project fund items. Having the transparency of a separate fund makes it easier to get information and answers to your questions. Certainly, the city finance staff can run reports and sort and parse out the necessary elements when asked about street projects, but by not having a separate street fund, every report you request, every search conducted adds a few minutes to that task, and all said in years' time, maybe you spend $100 or $1,000 in just staff time by adding minutes at a time to those accounting tasks. In the information age, it is critical to have the data infrastructure to minimize clicks and sorts and filter when gathering information. The state auditor is not in the position of recommending onerous methods, but rather streamlining in a myriad of ways widely-accepted best practices and all in the voice of being an advocate for the taxpayers. So, please, in the light of being an advocate for taxpayers yourselves and becoming more transparent about where your tax dollars go and are spent, in this case specifically for streets, comply with a rather simple request to have a street fund. Not only does it become an element of being able to compare and contrast La Center to other cities, since other municipalities operate this way accounting-wise, but will be a tool in the thousand clicks saved as this fourth street project comes about and hundreds of reports are on it are needed, and your questions answered in more timely and accurate manner."
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have the motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We have no presentations or proclamations this evening. Brings us to the mayor's report. Just like to remind everyone, our council meetings in February will be February 8th and the 22nd, and we'll have work sessions as well. There will be no mayor's town hall in February. That brings us to the attorney's report.
Good evening.
Thank you, Bronson.
Things have been quiet on the legal front, which we always like. I attended a Public Record Act seminar put on by MRSC yesterday, and it was like an hour and a half, just an update on recent cases, and that's about it, so.
All right, thank you. Next is council comments, and we'll begin with Councilmember Fox.
Good evening. Could we hold on just a moment? We are not online, or people can't hear us, so could we take like a minute to reboot the system?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Let's just fix it.
All right, we can try. Try again.
Okay. Okay, good evening. Good to see everyone. Nice to see some new faces and lots of familiar ones. Yes, I could talk all day. I think every time I'm up here about how great La Center schools are, and I just, you know, I stay here to raise my children here for a reason, you know? And I grew up here and, you know, did very little traveling, but always knew that there was just, can't be another place like La Center. So, it's like, I don't need to go out and really try and look. So, why try to, you know, duplicate something that seems so great? So, great to hear. Love all that. Love to hear the programs, Pete. That's just so amazing. Obviously, in my industry, in tutoring, we just see a lot of students who aren't ready for college bound, and so, being able to get them in a trade and teach them real skills, because those are the guys that are making the real money, and girls, because if they have the skill set, because there's very, there's less of them out there, and so, they're able to, you know, really have a really decent wage. So, it's a really great opportunity. So, I'm super excited about that. Also, really excited about some of our local businesses coming in. We got that podug pizza coming in. So, just a really great opportunity to get excited about some, supporting some new businesses. I chatted with the gentleman who's putting in the coffee shop at the old Public Works Building, and he's hoping within, you know, three months' time that he would be, you know, somewhat up and running or trying to start up. So, yeah, just excited about that growth and about supporting locals. So, thanks so much. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Off to you, Sean.
Councilmember Boyle?
Good evening, everybody. I don't have a whole lot tonight. Just want to say thank you for coming out. Love all the school stuff and the trades, along with what Melissa said. Yeah, I'm a trade laborer myself, so I can attest that there's lots of benefits to that. But, yeah, other than that, good to see everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobin?
Yeah, I too would like to echo that as well. And something Al said, you know, La Center is a very special town, and it isn't the buildings or the new stuff that's coming, and it's the people. The people make this city special. And Pete, I don't normally bring up anything about businesses or anything like that, but I too would also like to speak afterwards for some of those programs. And I think that's about all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. For councilmember Servini's comments, I too would like to thank you, Pete, for all that you're doing within the school district and continuing the strong presence of the school district in La Center. It's always been a big, big part of the community, brings everyone together for the events and the sport. And it just warms everybody's heart to see the progress that we make in the school districts with all of the, you know, bring, as you said, bringing the community together, focusing on the positive and instilling that in the youth as well. So, thank you for that. That will take us to staff reports, and the first item on our agenda is the 2023 Community Center Parking Lot Repair and Kitchen Remodel Project Bid, and Mr. Tony Cooper will present.
Center, and I'm going to present.
Can everyone?
Okay. Can you still hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to present the bid award request for the Community Center Kitchen Remodel and Parking Lot Repair Project. So, I'm going to go into a little background about this. In early 2021, Jeff Swanson, on the city behalf, submitted an application for, to the state legislature for $500,000 to do what was called, I think, aging obsolete appliances, replacing aging obsolete appliances and approving ventilation and fire suppression in the Community Center kitchen and addressing deferred maintenance and repairs in the parking lot. So, in 2021, later in about June, the city received a $500,000 grant, and this grant is regulated through the Department of Commerce. So, there's certain steps the Department of Commerce requires in order to receive that grant, and part of it is getting DAP approval, Department of Archaeological and Historical Preservation approval, LEED servocation, and tribal approval. Affected tribes are affected by, potentially by this. So, this is pretty standard for the Department of Commerce approval. This city hall had to go through that same, all these same steps, and Department of Commerce won't authorize the funding until you go through this process and get that approval. So, that being said, staff worked on those, those applications to try to get approval. During that time, it's required to get an architect to design the kitchen remodel. So, the city used the MRSC site, and in this, in this staff report, it actually says that, we advertised it in the Columbia, but that's, that's not correct. We use the MRSC site, and the city is part of that. And it's used for small works projects, to hire contractors for small works projects, but it can be used for architectural, all sorts of consultants. So, we looked at the MRSC and determined that there was a lot of qualified firms, sent out, called a few of them, and sent out what's called requests for qualifications. Now, it's required by the RCW that you hire professional engineering and architecture, or even surveying services by what's called qualifications, not by cost. So, the city prepared what's called an RFQ, and it described the kitchen remodel project plans, all the criteria that would be used for design, and as well as criteria for selection. So, that was sent to them, and we got three architects that submitted proposals. Staff looked at those and went through the criteria for selection, ranked them, and the most qualified proposal was by Collins Architecture. And so, a, once, once that firm was selected for most qualified, then we negotiated a contract proposal with them for cost and, and what they were proposing for design. So, the plans that were prepared were discussed about having some modifications to bring it up to more of a commercial standard. So, what is in the plans is to put an island in the center of the kitchen, and the island would be a gas, have a gas range, convection oven, and stainless-sealed countertops. There's no gas in, in the community center, so they have to pipe gas from the east side through underneath, underneath the ceiling and then provide gas service. So, that's part of it. There's going to be new sinks that are going to be in there. One, one of the criterias that the Department of Health has to approve that, since it's a kitchen. And so, there was a permit requirement for that, for that review by them. They require hand sinks, hand-washed sinks, other types of sinks, and they required a mop sink. So, there's a lot of things that had to be modified, not, not really too much cost difference, but things that had to be modified to comply with that permit. So, that being said, it actually will replace the fridge there with a, with a larger fridge, freezer, new flooring, and a vented hood up above it that is a fire suppression hood. So, it'll be vented to the outside, above, above, above the roof. So, the architect was working on that, and while they were working on that, we started designing on the parking lot repairs. So, the first thing I noticed that in that parking lot is that the major problem is that the major problem with it is the drive aisle. It's, it has a lot of alligator cracking, what's called alligator cracking, which means there's subgrade failure along the drive aisle. The parking stalls really don't have any damage at all. They're, they're, they're pretty in good shape. So the plan was to start to look at repairing the drive aisle. So pretty much the majority of the drive aisle has to be excavated, about a foot depth base with geogrid and pavement. And then all the way around to most of, most of that drive aisle. There's portions that are, are okay, that will just be reconstructed as necessary. But the portion, the drive aisle will have basically new asphalt along, along the center. One of the other criteria for the La Center Minnesota Code is that if you excavate more than, I believe it's eight inches, you have to look at archaeological impacts. In other words, you have to look at doing a predetermined, what's called a predetermination. And this is required of any development that happens. They have to go through this, what's called predetermination. And really what it is, is an archaeologist looks at this and determine if, if there's any potential for impacts, artifacts, any, any impacts to, to any kind of archaeological items. So during, so what we did was we had our crew go out there and excavate down, determine how deep we would really have to impact. And what we found was not, not only that, that there was not very much base down there, but that the water elevation is about eight inches below the pavement. So there's a groundwater impacts to that whole parking lot. So, so what happens with, with groundwater is you really want to try to drain that out so you don't get any more impacts to the, to the pavement or the base. So a perforated pipe will be installed underneath that base, the new base, to try to drain all of that. And it'll be connected to a catch basin that's at the low end of it, kind of where the access to the elementary school is there, the edge of the parking lot. And so that's, that's part of what has to be done in order to drain it. So in addition, as, as part of this, once there is another requirement, Department of Justice requires that when you, when you do any kind of reconstruction or even paving in, in a city right of way or public access, it's required that you upgrade the ramps to meet current ADA accessibility. So there are some ramps there that are accessible to the building that don't meet current ADA standards. So part of that will be to reconstruct those ramps to meet that ADA requirement. So that's the drive aisle, basically reconstruction, basically the drive aisle. Now, the parking stalls, really, they're in really good shape. But so what was done? There was, there was, in the bid package, there was schedules that would be required to bid. The first schedule would be to reconstruct the drive aisle and all, everything what I'm talking about, what I have talked about so far. And then the second schedule, Schedule B, would be the architectural and improvements to the kitchen. A couple of other schedules were added to this. And one was to really trying to figure out ways to repair the, just the parking areas to make it look good if, if, if it was within budget. So Schedule C, that's listed here, is to take off the rest of the pavement of the parking stalls and recompact the base and then just pave it. So that all looks like new parking lot. The Schedule D would be just a slurry seal, which is slurry seal. I don't know if you know what that is, but it's basically like a sand and muscified asphalt mixture. And they just seal it on the top. You see it a lot, a lot of parking lots and even some roads. But those schedules were added just to, to see if there was a way to fix that and stay within budget. So there was also, so the Clark County Health Department permit was scored card. We had to get a building permit since it was a remodel and fire department approval. So on November 16th, the plans were advertised, well, the project was advertised in the Columbia. And the city hosted the plans for the civil plans, the architectural plans and the bid package on city website for contractors to, to download. And on January 10th, bids were opened up and there were five bidders. And so I've, I've showed, I've actually attached this to, to this report. It shows you all the bidders, the different schedules that they bid. And it looks like that the low bidder was, is Lee Contractors for $667,335. That's the base bid, this bid, bid Schedule A and B. So that's, that's what's required for the grant, the base bid. The, the, the other schedules, you know, they were added in there just for, just to see if we could stay under budget. But of course, we haven't. So there's a certain amount of working days that they have to do this, to build this project. The kitchen will probably start before the parking lot just because it, that's not weather restricted. But the parking lot is, is a weather restricted type of construction. So the contractor can start on the kitchen before the, the rest of the construction. So the, the overall budget, so originally there was a five, there's $500,000 for this grant. The city budgeted another $100,000 to see, make sure there was enough for the parking lot. But so there was $600,000 total in the budget in 2022. Since then, some of the permitting, the architectural services and everything have, have reduced that to about $570,000 left in the 2023 budget. So staff is recommending that the base bid, bid Schedule A and B be awarded. And that in the 2023 capital budget, there looks to be enough room to address those added costs, the added costs for this project. But if, if it, if for some reason it doesn't, the projects don't come in under budget in 2023 budget, it'll have to be a budget amendment. So I think that's all I have. Any questions, anybody has?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Sure.
You said drainage, the drainage was included in it?
Yes, the drainage is included in it and the, and the ramp reconstruction. Yes.
In there, I was noticing you were saying that it's weather permitted for the construction of it. And it said May or June. I can only ask if you can push that to like June or July of some sort, just because of the kids.
It might end up being, yeah, yeah. It might end up being done later on based on what, once I know what the contractor's schedule is, we can talk about that. It does, it does talk about impacts to the school in that. And so if, we could talk about that with them and to see if they can start that after. Yeah. And, and part of the, the contract is that this, that the contractor has to, to allow access to the parking lot when it's, when, when it can be, when they can, you know, provide access. And in other words, when they have the excavation, you know, the big dissection of excavated asphalt and base, they might not be able to access it. But, but the contractor is required to provide access to people to park there throughout the time when that's, when, when it can be done.
So for the new council members, this is something that we've been talking about since 2012. I think it was at the end of 2019 that it was brought up. Oh, am I too quiet? I'm so sorry. This is something that was brought up, I think, at the end of 2019. And we discussed in 2020, but we had to hold off because of budget constraints and COVID and loss of revenue. It is something that does need to be done at some point regardless. Otherwise, it's just going to deteriorate even worse. It is bad. I mean, the mayor brought it up to me at that point. And I kind of questioned it. And I went over and checked it out myself. And he is, it is true. For me, I think replacing everything in there is probably the best bet for the extra $75,000 at that point. So A, B, C.
Yeah. Yeah. So I didn't put this in the report. So if you look at the bid schedule, the low bidder is, if you look at the kitchen part of it, which is Schedule B, they're significantly lower than the rest of it. And I wondered why. So I called them up and they said, well, we assume that the kitchen, that the city would buy the kitchen, kitchen equipment and that, and that we would install it. I said, no, that's not what the plans show. And that's not what was intended. And the rest of the bidders understood that. So I asked them, are you going to, do you want to withdraw your bid? Or are you going to, are you going to try to make this work? And they said, well, we, we, they wanted to, they wanted to do it for the price, even though they knew they were going to lose probably, they said $50,000 on it. So, but one of the things they asked was, please don't award the, the other two schedules because it's going to drive our costs so high that it might not be profitable. So what I'm saying is if we award it, they may say, well, we can't build it for that. So I'm just, I'm just telling you that that's, that's what they told me. Yes, it's, it's a very lame answer, but, but, but they said that they still want to build it for what they bid it at, even though they're going to lose some money on it. So you look at the rest of the bids and they're, I mean, you look at the kitchen and three, 553, 5, 600,000, 675, you can tell there's something wrong there. So that's their assumption.
I have heartburn with that kind of a lame reply.
Yeah.
And
I agree.
And the lack of understanding, you know, you provided them with the information of what the project was going to entail.
Yeah.
And clearly they didn't read it and fully understand it. And if we've already got that kind of communication and understanding hurdles, it's an extensive project.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't really want to set the city up for further issues. You know, what else was forgotten?
That is true. I have worked with these contractors before. They did all the concrete, concrete work in the roundabout. So they, they have done work for the city before, but I haven't worked with them that much. But there's other contractors on here. The problem is, is that, I, I guess, I don't know, Bronson can speak about this, but really when you have a low bidder, you're supposed to award the low bidder unless, unless there's some reason that you can, I, I don't know. That's a good.
They're responsible, they're.
Yeah, they're responsible. They bid it and, and they read the plans, so.
But they didn't bid it complete.
They didn't bid it complete.
That's right. So that doesn't meet the requirements. So we shouldn't have to award something just on, based on price at that point, right? Or you go to the next one?
Well, so.
But didn't you also say that they could deny and say, after you saying, yes, you.
They might say, well, we really can't.
We can't build it for this. And then they're going to.
And then you're going to. Right. And you're going to go to the next, next highest bidder, which is J H Kelly for 729,000. So I, you're right. I mean, they're, they're responsible enough to be able to submit a bid. They should have, they should have read it. But it's not really a good excuse. I'm just saying that that's what they told me.
So then what is the actual total, total for A and B? Just from them, just to make sure that they're going to cover everything they said in there?
667,335.
Okay. And that includes the kitchen stuff?
That includes all the kitchen remodel, all the parking lot.
So can we award A and B to them and then go to the next bidder for the C? Which is 25,000 or 28,000 more? Or is that?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Yeah, you can't do that.
He'd be mixing contractors.
Yeah. Yeah. All you think we can do is just throw out the bids and rebid it. Yeah. So I, or, or just, or just say you just have to, you know, you, you have to honor the contract that you, that you bid.
You can't, you can't force somebody to do something that they're going to lose on anyways at that point. So I, I mean, like just rebid.
Well, yeah, because I don't want them to do, you know, less work because they already know they're not, you know, what kind of energy is that? They already know they're going into a loss. I don't want those kinds of things to be working for me.
Yeah.
I think Liz put that.
But how much further out would you be if we had, went to a total rebid for this project to even start?
How much, which, I'm sorry.
How much, how much further out would we be?
Probably be another several months. I mean, we'd have to, it, it, first of all, you know, you have to allow at least a month to bidders. So you got to advertise it again. You got to go out and.
Additional costs and time.
Right. So it could be add two or three months easy.
I mean, and what's to say that Lee's not going to come back close to call? So just pick, you know, I don't know.
So maybe I might chime in here for a sec. So yeah, it is a little bit unusual. I will agree that they didn't, they kind of missed the, the fact that the kitchen equipment was to be provided by them. But at this point, the council's options are really award to Lee. When we, you can award whatever combination of schedules that you choose. But from our understanding and talking to Lee contractors, if anything beyond A and B are awarded, they'll probably will withdraw from the contract at that point.
Completely?
That's our understanding. Sounds like they can make it work with their error if it's A and B, but not if it's A, B and C or A, B and D. So that's one option is award to Lee in A, B or A, B and any other combination, knowing that they may withdraw if it's anything beyond A and B. Or council can reject all bids and we can go out and do this again. But that, as in addition to the time constraint that Tony mentioned, that may also influence the prices that we receive because everyone's sort of seen each other's homework at that point. So.
I mean, personally, if they were planning to do A and B within what they bid, I mean, it seems like they're able and qualified to do the work. I mean, I, in my opinion, I, for lack of a better term, I would say that we'd make them put their money where their mouth is and go A, B, C. And if they can't do it, then we go to the next bidder.
Right. And the other thing that I was thinking about those, you're saying that Sean, as you're talking about $200,000 or a hundred and somewhat thousand dollars more to go with somebody else just for B, you know, alone. So if we don't go with this and they backtrack out of it, that the A and B with them is the lowest price we're probably going to see. That's, that's an issue. Boy, what a predicament.
Yeah. I know. It just looked odd when I looked at it. It just, it was so much lower than the other one.
It really needs.
The entire project needs to be done.
I mean, Meals on Wheels uses that in the kitchen. The community uses it for other events. It's definitely something that needs to be done.
So we could, we could do is, it's above budget anyway to do A, Schedule C and D. We could do later on, we could have another small, you know, project where we do a slurry seal. And maybe we could slurry seal the whole thing at one time with, with another product.
But is that going to, is that just prolonging?
Yeah.
The inevitable?
Brian, what's your opinion?
Yeah. I, in my personal opinion, I think a slurry seal follow up would be a reasonable way to handle it if there is concern about basically having the whole parking lot look consistent. You know, we're pretty confident that the pavement and the subgrade in the parking stalls themselves is in decent enough shape. So really you just want to, you know, keep the asphalt on them, you know, in good, you know, shape and protect it from sun damage so that it doesn't, you know, degrade over time. It's really the drive aisles where we've seen the, the main issues with pavement failure and, and A and B address that. So.
That's good to know.
Can you go back to the.
So Brian, if I kind of reiterate, I'm trying to think what you're saying. You're saying A and B we definitely need, but we could go back and do D later. Is that what you're saying? If we wanted to just leave C out of the equation at this point and just focus on A and B?
Yeah. So it's, so it's C or D, it's sort of an either or option. We were just looking at, you know, the, the ideal solution, you know, to have a pretty much brand new parking lot would be to go. And I think it's, is it C that's the grinded inlay?
No, yeah, C is a grinder. It's really the pavement, just taking off the pavement of the parking stalls and relating it with pavements.
So the whole thing would look like a new paved surface? And then D basically would make it look, you know, all new and black, but there would still be, you know, a seam where the drive aisles replaced, but the parking lot isn't. But again, that's not uncommon to have in pavement repair where you have, you know, cold joints and you, there's treatments to keep water out of those that are fairly typical and common. So we really just put both C and D on there to see, as Mr. Cooper mentioned, if we can fit that in the budget. And if so, you know, we were hoping to pursue that. But at this point, we're over budget even as it is with just the base bid. So.
And you're saying we have 580 or 570?
570 left in the budget. So yeah. Certain amount of it is still.
And the rest of the money comes out of what fund?
So at the, in the 2023 budget, all this and all other capital projects, the estimated cost is transferred to the capital projects fund. So this is the first project we're awarding this year. So we have adequate funds to cover that additional $100,000 or so. Depending on how the other. Depending on how the other capital projects that we've budgeted this year come in, if they call, come in, you know, say on budget, then as we get to the end of the year or to that point where we're seeing that those projects have all come in on budget, we'll have to come to the council for a budget amendment to add an extra, you know, funds to the capital project fund to make up for this, you know, this bid coming in over what was estimated. If other projects come in under budget, then we won't. But by this, basically by the nature of this being the first project and we're at the beginning of the year, right now, we have adequate funds in that capital projects funds for this. But as we get, as we get through those other projects, we'll have to, you know, continue to monitor that.
For me, I, I think, I don't want to risk losing or having to spend another hundred and some odd thousand in some months. I, I kind of like that idea that we come back and slurry it afterwards, maybe put that up to bid or look at it from there.
Right.
Because just looking at those numbers, you're talking about four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three sixteen, so another hundred and six thousand dollars is what I actually spent just to deal with that. So yeah, it's almost award them the A and B and then just re-design it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just doing, you know, believe.
How mad is the, the water issue?
The groundwater? Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it was, it's that far below the pavement. So it's in the base. So it, it needs some kind of subgrade drainage and that's what, there will be a proof pipe down there to drain that. So it should help it. In addition, it's gonna have more, a deeper section of base and geogrid, which is really a, it's a geotechnical reinforcement that's made for subgrade failures. So it helps. And it'll have more asphalt.
Okay.
So it should address the.
That's the critical part.
That's the critical part. That's part of what the grant really assumed, you know, would be done, our maintenance repairs.
It's the issues we've had, you know, throughout the park.
Yeah.
So yeah, we have to address that. All right. So do we have consideration for a motion? And more questions?
What's that? No, I'm good. I move to award this bid from Lee Contractors. Just want to say specifically for schedule A and B in the amount of six, six, seven, three, five point seventy-six. That's not how you say that. Six hundred and sixty-six, seven, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and. You guys know what I mean?
Can't get it out. Too many numbers.
You got that recorded, right?
Yeah.
How often do we have to say those big numbers? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion approving the award, the bid award from Lee Contractors in the amount of six hun- for schedule A and B, correct? All right, schedule A and B for the total amount of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor Pro Tim, we need to pause for a moment and we're gonna try and restart the system again.
Technical.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we are back in working order. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. The next is our police staff report and Chief Richards then will be presenting.
Thank you, City Council and the community members. For brevity tonight, because we're running a little bit longer, I'll try to summarize this page one through seven of the crime report. If you want to look at the numbers, the crime reports are on the agenda package on the website and we also post the actual report on the police department website. So it's there. I'd like to cover five topics really quickly tonight. I apologize. One is our December crime stats. The other is a quick comparison to year end of 2021, 2022. Like to talk very briefly about some scams that are going on in our community where some of our senior citizens have been victimized. Update on the city of Ridgefield police study. And finally, just to kind of some comments on the 2023 legislative session that's in process. So for the month of December, we had fourteen total offenses reported and that compares with three in December of 2021. The most significant offenses in December were four aggravated assaults, which were stabbings, which were all on December twelfth at the, the, I forgot the name of the casino, on Last Frontier. Thank you. And we also had three simple assaults, which were all either DV related or family related. And we had one vandalism where a juvenile damaged a home under construction. And this is related to two or three other vandalisms of homes under construction that occurred at the end of November. And this was just a late report that got reported in December. All the, the two kids have been identified and we're trying to resolve that through restitution with a contractor. Because if you remember, there were some significant damage in, in this several thousand dollar range. We had a total of hundred and forty-eight offenses reported in 2021 as compared with a hundred and sixty-three offenses reported in 2022, which is increase of fifteen offenses. We had four arrests in December of 2022, which included impersonation, violation of protection order, aggravated assault and simple assault. December of 2022 showed a decrease in calls for service as compared to 2021 with declines in both community and police initiated activities. And if we move to page eight, which is a kind of a summary comparison of 2021 versus 2022, the green is a decrease, the red is an increase and yellow is neutral. There was no change. So when you actually look at that, where we did very well is in stolen vehicle reports, where somebody's actually stolen a car. In 2021, we had twenty-one reported auto thefts. In 2022, we had two. And remember, one of those was a late report from approximately 2012, 2014. So in reality, we only had one auto theft last year. I think part of that is, we did make an arrest last year, but a subject that was involved in some auto thefts in the area. And I think people are more aware, cars are being locked, keys aren't being left in the cars. I think the cars that are subject to YouTube videos where you can, they show you how to steal a Hyundai or a Kia, they have been with the steering wheel locks that we've handed out. I think that's also helped a little bit. The bad news is we did have increases in aggravated assaults. We had seven last year. We had two DV related and one non-DV related. So out of seven aggravated assaults, four were at the casino, two others were DV related and one was non-DV related. And we also had an increase in DV related simple assaults, larceny and thefts. As far as DV related crimes, if you look at all in total, we had thirteen reported in 2021 and we had twenty-seven reported in 2022. So the increases that are driving our numbers are predominantly DV related assaults and those kinds of things. Especially simple assaults and vandalisms. We also had an increase in vandalism calls that are actually, when you look at the reports, they're actually coming from two sources. The first source is juvenile related assaults, or I'm sorry, juvenile related vandalisms. If you look out the community, we've had some graffiti, we've had some fences damaged. And we had these homes under construction where they did significant damage. So you have these very small numbers and stuff happens and it looks like a very large increase. And the other place we're having these issues is actually people breaking windows in the cars now. Since people are blocking their cars, somebody that wants to steal your cell phone, they'll break your window and steal your cell phone. You know how two offenses, you've got the vandalism for damaging the window and then you've got the theft of the, the cell phone or whatever other properties in the vehicle. So what you're seeing happen is people get more aware of blocking your cars. There are people out there that are still gonna break some windows to get into them. So that's what's driving those vandalism stats. So with that being said, does anybody have any questions regarding crime stats before I move on? Okay, community messaging. If you happen to read the paper lately or on Facebook, there is three very common scams going on right now. The first one is a law enforcement scam where somebody calls you and says, hey, there, I'm a Deputy Joe Blow from the Sheriff's Department or I'm Bob Richardson of the Center Police Department. And you have some fines or a warrant. And if you send me three hundred dollars in gift cards, we'll just dismiss the warrant. And people do that, especially senior citizens. So that's called a law enforcement scam and that's really prevalent right now. The other one is where we had victims in our community is the sweepstakes or lottery scam. And that's what you get the call. Sometimes it's from a guy in Nigeria that's an uncle of, one of these uncles you've never heard of or a banker or something like that. And you've won a lottery or some kind of sweepstakes. And hey, in order to claim your ten thousand dollar prize, you only have to send us, it's either the taxes or a handling fee. It could be a hundred dollars, it could be a thousand dollars. And if you send that to us either in cash or in gift cards, we'll process that and we'll send you your money. And obviously, you don't ever get your money. And the third one that's happened, and believe it or not, it happens quite oddly, quite frequently, especially with elderly grandparents. They'll get a call from somebody claiming to be a grandson or granddaughter who's in jail. And in order to do the right thing, they say, hey, I'm in, I'm in jail. I need bail money, but don't tell my parents. And can you send me either cash or gift cards and then I'll get bail and get out of jail? And unfortunately, some of these senior citizens go down to the bank and withdraw cash or go and get gift cards and mail it to their grandson, who is not really their grandson. So that's, that happens. So those are the three scams in our community. So if you see anything, hear anything, please give the police department a call. Or if you have elderly neighbors who need to get to the bank and draw a lot of money out for some reason, it's always good to question them a little bit. I've seen a lot of bank tellers are trained in this where they question the elderly when they're coming in to make that unusual withdrawal. So you, just something you need to be aware of.
Real quick, Chief, just to add to that, because I see that quite a bit with through emails and business accounts and such like that. So for those out in the audience that are, you know, kind of puzzled why people would send that money, it happens daily. And I've watched payrolls go and I've watched gift cards go and in twenty thousand dollar increments being sent. These scammers know what they're doing. So if you know people that need that type of education, please pass that, that word along.
Thank you. City of Ridgefield, we just got notice today, the city of Ridgefield has completed professional service contract with Burke Consulting to complete a police services study between the city of Ridgefield and the city of La Center. The study is, needs to be completed no later than June thirtieth of 2023, which to me is a long period of time and I think we can do it quicker than that, but we're not driving the boat. It's also identified the project team and the scope of work. The study will include a project team of key stakeholders from both cities and also an estimated financial impact. There will be a process to present findings to both city councils prior to any local agreement. And we'll also have to obviously have a contract in writing that's been reviewed. I have a copy of it. I just got it today and I'd be more than happy to send it to each individual council person if you would like it and you can read it. And so they're moving forward. I know that they had some meetings on Monday in Ridgefield and they're gonna reach out and continue to do some more meetings. So we're actually moving forward on that, which is good news for us. Any questions on that?
You know, I'll just be upfront and honest, that timeline's kind of disappointing. I know it's not at your, you know, hands or anything like that. And I have spoken with some of the Ridgefield City Council and they are interested, which is, you know, gives us a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. But yeah, it's just, it's, I mean, we're on.
It is a long process, you know, and I agree with you. I'm hopefully, I've already done some of the work on the statistics they're gonna need. They're all, really all done. So I'm gonna send that to them probably sometime this week, kind of prompting them that, hey, we already can check this box and keep the thing moving forward. Again, you know, for us, we just want to provide whatever information they need and, and it hope help kick the can down the road. But like you said, we're not driving the bus. It's really a contract between the city of Ridgefield and this consultant. But the consultant is a good consultant. They've done two similar studies for two other cities in, up by the Seattle area. So we're moving forward. And again, is any other comments on that?
Have we received any notices from our officers looking or moving on to other agencies?
I can tell you without getting into specifics that both of our officers are in backgrounds for other agencies. And, and, and quite frankly, both of them will do better financially in the long run. So, and professionally, quite frankly, with the agencies are going to. Anything else on that? Okay, I'll move forward then. If you didn't know, or if you did know, the 2023 legislative session is underway. And I've been attending updates from WASPAC, which is our police chief and sheriff's association. I've also got on there and I've actually read some of the bills that are police related. There's about eleven pages of bills that are law enforcement related in one way or another to either the policing or the criminal justice system. So I read those and then they have hearings and anybody from the public can get on their website, watch the hearings or watch the recorded hearings. And you can also read the legislation. You can see how it progresses in the, in the committees. And you can see how these bills are edited as they move through. And you can actually either testify remotely. You could write written comments and you can send them to your state legislators. And I think it's my, my duty as your police chief to just give you some ideas of some of the ones that are on our radar that are falling under the auspices of police reform that we really need to look at and, and hopefully community members will read them. And I want to preface my comments by, in, in no way am I or anybody that's a city official condoning biased policing or excessive force or any of those things. But there are, you know, very special interest groups in the state of Washington that have the ear of our legislators and they sometimes come up with these bills. Remember back in 2021, we passed a lot of police reform legislation that we had to fix in 2022. And we're still trying to fix some of that police legislation in 2023. But two of the bills that you need to be aware of, one is HB ten twenty-five. And this allows this state cause of action against police officers in their agencies. And this is basically the ability to sue police officers and police departments for civil rights violations at the state level. And it, the main issue with this bill is it actually eliminates qualified immunity as a defense for either the police office or the agency. And if you actually read the bill, it's almost like there, there is no defense for these claims. It's very broad. And I think that's one of the things we need to look at and one of the things we, I hope that people start looking at these bills and and actually starting to, because what's gonna happen in the community is these risk management pools at insurers for liability are either gonna raise the rate so high that we can't afford it or they're gonna just get out of the business of liability insurers for police departments. And then individual cities will have to self-insure themselves. You'll have to go out and start banking money to pay off claims. And I think the other thing it's gonna do, it's gonna drive more people out of the profession and it's gonna increase risk management to police departments where it's gonna impact our response. And the only thing I can equate it to is that the more risk there is for us to go out and do our job, individual cities and agencies and risk managers are gonna start to evaluate the call. And if we have calls that aren't mandated, that we go out by state law, they're gonna do a risk assessment and decide, hey, these kind of calls are not worth going out anymore because there's too much risk. And you'll see police departments become more like fire departments where we sit in the station, we don't do preventive patrol. And when a call happens, the three officers and a supervisor will roll over the call and will do an assessment. And then we'll, we'll either decide whether or not we're gonna put, put out the fire or we're gonna not. So that's kind of where my concern is, but that is a good bill to track. Because it, it isn't, it's poorly written in my opinion and it really doesn't allow cities to have pretty much of a defense, either the officers as individuals or the city. So that's one bill. And the other bill that's out before us is HB fifteen thirteen, which has some good intentions, but I think it's a little bit over broad. But basically, if this will prohibit peace officers from stopping vehicles where the primary offense is a non-moving violation. So unless that non-moving violation is an immediate serious threat to the safety of the operator or others on the roadway, an example would be both headlights out, both taillights out, those kinds of things. Prior to stopping the vehicle, the officer has to either type in the computer, get on the radio and explain why he stopped in this vehicle for a non-moving violation, has to explain on the radio why it's a threat to public safety. And that's not, again, when you have hundreds of police officers out there in the county making car stops, it's gonna be very difficult to, to do. it's going to be very difficult to do. And so one of the things you have to remember that under this section, when a police officer stops you for a traffic violation that's non-moving because it's an imminent threat to safety, he can only talk to you about the violation. He can't talk to you about anything else. You can't question anybody in the car or drivers. And finally, it does apply, it applies to a lot of non-moving violations. So that means equipment violations, seatbelt violations, except car seats, uninsured motorists, expired or no registration, suspended or revoked driver's license, or persons with misdemeanor warrants, except for VUI, domestic violence protective orders, or civil court orders. So if I see Joe blow diving around the street, got a misdemeanor warrant for theft, you can't, you can't stop him. If somebody's an uninsured motorist, you can't stop them. So that's something that, again, committee members need to look at and think about. Is that the kind of policing we want? Because really, what we're doing is we're taking away any preventive patrol. For instance, we have, we all know we have auto thefts in our community at 3:00 in the morning or thefts from vehicle. And so we drive around at 3:00 in the morning. We see a suspicious car driving around. And if we see a burned out taillight, we'll stop the car. And we hope that when we walk up to the car, we'll see a guy, which I've seen before, has gloves on his hands, rubber gloves, not cold weather gloves, and has the stereo in the right seat, and has a map book open. And he's got a map book of the city, so he knows how to get around. And then we would make a probable cause arrest, and we go forward. Well, under the new, this law, you could steal a car. You could take the license plates off the car, put the license plates in the trunk because it's just an equipment violation. And you could drive around all night, and nobody can stop you unless it's a moving violation like speeding or running a red light, something like that. So those are just two bills I want you to be aware of. There's others out there. But as individual committee members, and again, as a council, what you want, what you, what do you want for policing in the future? Because at the end of the day, you get the policing that you want. And if that's by making laws and restricting police work. So I just want to bring you to your attention because I don't think either of these, as written, the long-term harm to the community is, is not worth the bills how they are currently written. And that's really all my report is tonight. Are there any questions?
Those are still in committee, right?
Yes, they're in committee. Both of them are pushed very hard by certain interest groups. One was written by the ACLU. Now, really briefly, the equipment violation one, there is some good part of that. One part of the bill is that if you don't have the funds to fix your light or your brake lights, there would be a voucher that the state could give you, and somebody would fix it for you, that kind of thing. It's still going to cost taxpayers money, which is, you know, what we do as a society. But there's some good, good out of that. But I think just ignoring the problem altogether, whenever, when nobody registers the cars anymore, and nobody cares about whether their driver's license is suspended or revoked, then you just have anarchy, right? So.
I was just going to ask.
Yeah.
Our registrations.
Yeah, so that's where we are. Thank you.
Bob, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to Ridgefield just a little bit and all that stuff. So with our two officers actively trying to be hired somewhere else, just what is the length of time it typically takes for somebody to go through the hiring process for a lateral?
For a lateral, it can take, in this case, one will probably take 60 days, and the other one could probably take 60 to 90 days, max. I think the, one of our officers, there is a probability he could be gone by March 1st. So what we're working on is contingencies right now that, okay, as we lose these police officers, we have to increase the staffing that we're doing now currently, and see how we're going to do that. We have some options. One is to continue doing what we're doing. The other one is to reach out either to Clark County Sheriff because they've actually increased their staffing quite a bit over the last year, or Ridgefield and do some kind of monthly, month-to-month contract to provide services for a set fee, and then, and do that. But we will, we will always have some type of police presence. We just need to work out the details.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then also, the other thing is, can you talk to Ridgefield Steve Stewart or whatever and see what we can do to maybe expedite this process with that study that they're going to be doing?
What I, what I would like to do, if it's okay, I think what I'd like to do is talk to the consultants because they're going to have, set up some meetings and kind of push the consultants a little bit quicker. I think that's the way to go in this particular case. I mean, Steve Stewart knows our position. He's talked to us. He's talked to the mayor. I've talked to the police chief. So we know that we need to move this down the road as quick as we can. But again, I know that the cities, the city of Ridgefield, their postures are very methodical in their decision-making process. And I don't want to get in front of that, but I like to talk to consultants and say, hey, what can we do to help you speed this thing up and move it down the road? So we're working on that.
Absolutely. And I mean, we're just kind of getting backed into a corner, you know. And I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers anymore than what's gone on for the past year and a half. But I mean, it's, I think if we are going to be coming up against that wall, we're, I mean, just as long as you're communicating with us, you know, with, you know, filling those positions once those officers leave, and, you know, knowing that we're going to have coverage and stuff is pretty important to the citizens. And as long as we can be transparent and have open dialogue about that, I think, you know, we'll do our best as a council to work through it. And, you know, obviously, we want, we know what all needs to happen. And so I just, we have to kind of roll with the punches, but also get ahead of it as much as we can.
Sure. Thank you.
And the mayor may not be at the meetings, but he's still having regular dialogue with the city of Ridgefield and the other entities that are involved. So it is a critical issue for everyone to keep pushing the button.
And we're always working back channels on a, we always have a Plan B. And so I'm always working on that, too.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Thanks, Chief. Takes us to the administrative services staff report, and Ms. Maria Swinger-Ensky will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. The December sales tax revenue or dispersment was $70,946 compared to $61,881 in 2021. And I do think that that is the first time we saw an increase last year over the prior year. I attended the Legislative Breakfast hosted by Clark Community College. Desi attended the Public Records Act 2023 Case Law Highlights, which was sponsored by MRSC, as well as the CREDC Annual Investor Event. And Mayor Pro Tem also attended the CREDC event as well. And then lastly, Riley attended Ethics for Washington CPAs. The gambling revenue was down last month, partially due to a couple of bad weather days. But we did end the year at over $1.6 million in revenue from the card rooms. And then the city has nominated Skylar McKinney, who is a senior at La Center High School, as our nominee for the AWC Center for Quality Community Scholarship. And if chosen by AWC, Skylar could win a $1,500 scholarship. Short and sweet tonight. Are there any questions?
Maria, do you know right off the top of your head what the projection was for 2022?
I believe it was 1.3.
It was?
Yeah.
It's good to see those numbers increasing.
It is.
And I'm sure the incident at the card rooms didn't help during December as well. We did try to support them after the meetings. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. This takes us to ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. And Ms. Maria Swinger-Ensky will present on Ordinance 2023-02, Amending 3.36070 Low Income Users.
All right. So a resolution was passed in May of 2019 setting the monthly residential stormwater rates for 2019 to 2022, and indicated that low-income service discounts should be established. The city then began those discounts. It was recently discovered that La Center Municipal Code 3.36.070 didn't get updated to add the low-income definition and qualification for user charges for stormwater. So as a result, we need to update the code to include the stormwater for discounts. And there is minimal budget impact because these discounts have already been factored in our budget for the year. And adopting the ordinance makes it clear in the code that the low-income discount is available just as we do for sewer. And it makes it clear what the process is to apply those discounts. So staff asks to hold a public hearing for this ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to open up the public hearing for Ordinance 2023-02, Amending 3.36070 for Low Income Users. Anyone with us this evening that would like to address?
Come on up, Al.
I'll never, you know, if somebody gives me an opportunity.
Please do.
Al Villa, 152 West 153th Street. Yeah, I think it's a great idea, you know. But remember, meals on wheels. We want, tomorrow's the last day for Meals on Wheels here. Then we're going to Ridgefield. So we want to get, I don't care. I'm real uncomfortable with the situation. But we want to be back, you know, in two months, you know, up here. We don't want to be over there with them Flatlanders. It's bad enough, you know, having them come over here. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Anyone else?
I was going to try to fit in what I was going to say under this.
Just introduce yourself.
Excuse me, Kimberly Elbin.
Thank you.
La Center resident. I think it's absolutely gracious that you let him talk a little bit off subject. So I will just for a moment, and then I'm going to leave. This is the stack of information relating to the United Nations entity. And I do, I can speak about that because with low income, it's coming under the American Rescue Plan and/or Build Back Better, which is to bring in millions of people, weaken America, and you will have a one-world order. It's pretty pure and simple. The chief pretty well said it. We're, you know, the police are tied, and it's to cause chaos. It's for us free citizens to, they want us to fear other people that are unlawful. I mean, haven't we been through this before a few hundred years ago? I'm just asking. People need to wake up to what's really happening. Stop allowing people to gloss it over for you. This is a one-world takeover, and I don't like it. God bless America as he always does.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Are there any callers? If there are anyone calling in to make comments, please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. All right, Clerk, are there any public hearing comments to be read?
There are none.
Thank you. I would like to now close the public hearing at, I hate that. 7:55. I have to count.
Gotcha.
It's like the numbers, right? Any comments from council?
I have done, actually. I have read through it and total agreement with it.
All right.
I'll try this one more time. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-02 by adding the definition and classification of low-income users as part of the stormwater charges.
Second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second approving Ordinance 2023-02 by adding the definition and classification of low-income users as part of the stormwater charges. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Don't have any other business to come before us.
We do actually have a resolution tonight.
Oh, what did I miss?
It's okay.
Another page. Forgive me.
It's also for low, it's also for low income.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Ms. Maria Swinger-Ensky will present.
All right. So the last resolution for low-income qualification on sewer accounts was adopted in July of 2018. And this adoption based the qualification on the Health and Human Services, so HHS going forward, poverty guidelines for Clark County for a two-person household only. This equates to a 50% discount for an income under $21,000 a year, and a 35% discount for incomes between $21,000 and $33,800. In comparison, based on household size of two people for 2022, it would be under $22,888 for a 50% discount, and between $22,888 and $36,600 for a 35% discount. We are asking to use the most recent HHS each year. And then we also want to remove the two-person household only and base the qualifications by actual people in the home, always using the most current HHS, HHS poverty guidelines for Clark County. And this is what is used in the surrounding cities. So the potential budget impact is $685 if we were to use the current 2022 chart. There were 14 customers who are currently receiving a 35% discount that would receive a 50% discount that would qualify for that. And then there are three customers who have turned in documentation that do not currently qualify, but after this resolution, they would qualify for a 35% discount. So with that being said, there also may be some people who previously qualified for a 50% discount who would now qualify for a 35% discount based on household size. So I do want to thank Desi and Bronson for their hard work on, and being their due diligence on this. And I am also open to questions.
Thank you.
I do have one question real quick. Does this can become retro for those people that could qualify and they owe back payments?
It would not.
It would not.
I'm assuming just adding further discounts will kind of make people more open to paying their bills, which would actually generate more revenue?
Yep.
Do you mean, that's the idea behind it?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. So rather than not pay anything, you know, the discount would go up.
All right. This time, we will open up once again for public hearing. Any comments to come before us? Al?
Unless you want to hear about Meals on Wheels.
No. Thank you for that. Are there any comments coming from callers? Please remember to press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. Clerk, are there any public hearing comments to be read?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing at 8:00. Any comments, additional comments from council?
I move to approve Resolution 467 as presented.
Second? Motion and second to approve Resolution 467 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, Maria, and Desi, and Bronson. So now I have nothing to come before us.
Are we at new business? Are we at new business? Yeah?
Do you have business to bring before us?
Yes, I had a question for Bronson.
Yes, I had a question for Bronson. I was just curious at what point, and this is with all, you know, respect and sensitivity to whatever may be going on with the mayor. But is there any way that you could, is there a certain timeframe where his absence has to be addressed? Or how does that work?
The statutes on vacancy is really what you're asking about. And for code cities, if you have three unexcused absences consecutively, that is a basis for there being a vacancy in an office. In terms of excused absences, those don't trigger a vacancy in office. And there, you know, I've looked at this, there there isn't another limitation in terms of attendance other than that three unexcused consecutive meetings.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, I just, I mean, as a council, it's just nice to be able to operate fully, you know, and have everybody's opinion. We're all elected for different reasons and to bring different, you know, things to the table, so.
Your concerns are warranted, definitely.
The the only other thing that I found was there is a statute, but it's it's directed at council members and not the mayor. Okay? In terms of if there's an inability to perform the duties. What there is a provision is for mayor, you designate a mayor pro tem, and you've done that. So that is how that is addressed in the mayor position. In the council member position, you don't have council member pro tems, right? So there, there is a process for vacancy and filling the vacancy.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other business to come before us? entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Good job.